Meeting to order.
Trustee Dan Brozio.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Trustee Mosip.
Here.
Trustee Petchikoff.
Here.
Trustee Thor.
Here.
Trustee Watts, here. Chair Barry.
Here, thank you. Next item, please.
Approval of minutes, approval of minutes for the following Board of Trustees meeting. Regular Board of Trustees meeting, January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move to approve these minutes.
So, support?
So I got a motion moved by trustee Dan Brozio, supported by trustee McDonald. Are there any corrections? Are there any objections to the motion? Hearing done, please attach unanimous vote in affirmative. Next item, please.
Student presentation.
Thank you, Madam Secretary and Mr. Chairman. It's my pleasure to introduce to you and ask to come to the podium three of our wonderful students who are representing the Engineering Club. You three can start moving up and I'll introduce you. Chair Barry to Hassan Barry, I don't know if that's any relation, but he's a pretty sharp guy, so maybe. Vice President Aiden Asher and Communications Officer Caitlin Nguyen. Did I get that right, Caitlin?
Yes.
Okay. They have a presentation for you and trustees, I hope you know, I've not stopped our convention of doing commendations, but we've shifted a bit to show you a couple of our student groups because the last time, I know you enjoyed it so much and I'm quite certain you'll enjoy this one. So it looks like we're going to start with President Barry. And sir, welcome and how are you?
Good, how about you?
Good, good. If you need any technical assistance, we've got some help for you behind you there, but I think you, the floor is yours now.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Hassan Barry. I am the Henry Ford College Engineering Club President. With me today, I have...
Hi, I'm Aiden Asher and I'm the Vice President of the Engineering Club.
Welcome.
And I'm Caitlin, I'm the Communications Officer.
Welcome.
Today, we're just going to be giving a summary of what the Engineering Club has done so far in the past year or so, as well as our future plans for the coming year. So, just to begin, I want to give a small overview of what the Engineering Club offers. The Engineering Club is a student-led organization comprising approximately eight board members, all of whom work tirelessly to maintain an encouraging environment for pre-engineering students to apply engineering concepts and principles and tackle real-world engineering problems. The Engineering Club has two main projects, an entry-level project, which Aiden will be presenting to you all shortly, as well as a more advanced project, a small-scale electric vehicle. We are also participating in several competitions such as the Battery Workforce Challenge, which Caitlin will be showcasing to you all today as well.
Hello, everyone. I will be presenting the intro, I guess the introduction of the competitions. These are the competitions that we had the last few semesters. Now, every single one of these competitions, we change up every semester to try and coordinate to a different, what is it? To a different skill. So, for example, the winter of two thousand and twenty-three, we had the Battle Bot competition and that prioritized durability of your bots and strength. So, the concept was very simple. It was a circle and you would try to push the other bot outside of the circle and stuff like that. But it tried to challenge students to making their bots heavy, durable, and able to essentially survive the gauntlets, if you will. Then, the following semester, fall of two thousand and twenty-three, we had, easy way to put it, it's like a Mario Kart rally competition that prioritized mobility and speed and the skill of the driver itself. And in this competition, we had many, we had drivers go one-to-one, or head-to-head, rather, in a race that they would have to go downstairs, they have to go up ramps and they would have to essentially pit maneuver or work around the other opponents. And it went very successful, actually. It's very fun to watch. Do I get it? Do I just click it? Oh, it's nice. Okay. Now, I will introduce to you this semester's competition, which is the Rubus Soccer Competition. Now, the one thing that we have not done yet that we wanted to try new this semester is having teams of two to try and put forward the whole mentality of teamwork in the engineering space. So, instead of going one-to-one, we were having teams of two go up against each other. And in this competition, there will be a bunch of balls scouted around up area, essentially. And then, these teams of two will try to gather balls and put them in basically goals, to put lightly, in goals. And that will, oh, man. This will help students understand how to, one, build the bots, obviously, because that's always priority number one, is get your hands dirty with some engineering, understand how to build blueprints. That's a blueprint right there. That's technically mine. It's a bit rough, a bit rough around the edges, but you get it. And be able to communicate with their group. And if you want to come and see this awesome competition, it's happening on April twenty-fifth, so you can put that in your calendars. And it'd be super cool if we had some trustees or some, like, high-ranking members, because then it looks like superficial. And of course, you guys can drop in anytime you want on Tuesdays and Thursdays from three to five in the M-Tech building. You all know where that's at.
So, as my colleague Aiden has showcased to you all, the Engineering Club has several entry-level projects for its entry-level pre-engineering members. However, the Engineering Club also consists of several more seasoned pre-engineering students, all of whom wish to tackle more challenging and complicated engineering problems. With that being said, I'm very proud to announce to you all today the Engineering Club's first ever longstanding project, the forty-eight-volt electric go-kart. This project is a small-scale electric vehicle that gives the students the opportunity to tackle real-world engineering problems and apply the real concepts and techniques they've learned throughout their classes. We now have the opportunity with this small-scale vehicle to do high-voltage, low-voltage wiring circuit design, mechanical engineering systems modeling, development, and implementation, as well as even metalworking and woodworking. This project has enabled us to tackle problems that we as students could have never imagined having the opportunity to tackle prior. This project has forced us to collaborate with other student groups, such as the Programming and Software Club. We hope to hopefully have that collaboration one day, as well as the Animation and Gaming Club, where we're working with their advisor, Kenneth Nichols, to create an intuitive user interface that the driver can, you know, use with gloves on or a helmet on without having to remove any of the safety, any of their safety gear. This project is essentially to provide students with the avenue of continued growth and to not be hindered with, you know, one system. They can branch out in any way they want. They can explore any field of engineering with this vehicle as it can accommodate any interest of the student, which is what this project is for.
My name is Caitlin, as you guys may know, and I am HFC's Communications Lead for the Battery Workforce Competition. So this is a competition that's funded by the Department of Energy and Stellantis for three years, where universities across North America pair up with their vocational schools. In this case, HFC is pairing up with UMD to build, design, integrate, and test an advanced EV battery pack into a Stellantis vehicle.
Right. Another challenge that Henry Ford College Engineering has taken apart in is the Community College Innovation Challenge. The Community College Innovation Challenge is funded by the National Science Foundation, NSF, and it is essentially to get students into the field of creating solutions to, again, once again, modern-day problems. However, this incentivizes them as it offers a cash reward, I believe, and of course, recognition with that. Students attend a one-week boot camp to essentially introduce them to product development and as well as product implementation and entrepreneurship in Virginia. Henry Ford has been one of the top ten finalists five times over the past years and listed below are the most recent five finalist positions that we've held. So in two thousand and fifteen, we held the position for a real-time accident detection system on Michigan highways. In two thousand and sixteen, the following year, we held the spot again for the Rescue Restaurant Food Waste to Address Hunger Initiative. Then we had Vetter Oil, an alternative form of yard waste, in the year following, two thousand and seventeen. Then unfortunately, due to some unknown circumstances, we did not hold a finalist position until two thousand and twenty-one with the Maskito, a nano-UV mask. Then, our most recent position was in two thousand and twenty-three with Moment, an artificial intelligence scheduling app. Finally, the Henry Ford Engineering Club also has participated in many student outreach events. We visit high schools and engage with students on hands-on engineering activities. As well as on campus, we participate in the many student outreach events, such as Manufacturing Day, Discovery Day, and Welcome Back Days. We're very active in all three of those avenues and we hope to continue to be for the foreseeable future. Present engineering opportunities, such as a Day in the Life of a Hawk, which will be taking place on March fifteenth and April twelve, are other opportunities that we hope to participate in this year. And myself, I have been actively creating and maintaining an interactive website for club updates that is actually displayed in the basement of J Building for students who are interested whenever they're walking by. If you guys are ever walking by and you see a nice touchscreen TV, interact with it, you know? Yeah, it's great. This touchscreen essentially aims to update anyone who's interested with what's going on in the club, the go-kart project, as well as what the Engineering Department has to offer as a whole. There's an entire page dedicated to the faculty, as well as the programs we offer here at Henry Ford. With that being said, we have a lot of special acknowledgements as a school is nothing without its teachers and educators. With that being said, I would like to offer a special thanks to Director of Student Activities Cassandra Flucker for her amazing work and endless support that she's offered, not just the club, but our separate projects, as well as myself as a student. Project Manager for the School of Business, sorry if I'm going to mispronounce this.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. For the School of Business Entrepreneurship and Professional Development, Kenneth Nichols. Dean for the School of Stan, Janice. And Dean for the School of Beppet, again, Dr. Patricia Chapman. And finally, student, oh, not finally, but Student Activities, Kayla Collins. And finally, unfortunately, I don't know why, he's not on the slide, but Joseph Carza, or Carca, I believe.
Kazarka?
Kazarka, yes. With the Machine and Tool Tech Shop in M-Tech. He has been extremely helpful in our, at least most recently, in machining our parts for the go-kart. So, we are eternally grateful for everyone's help, as well as our advisor, Dr. Hassan Mahsani-Nemeggi. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Trustee Thor?
From semester to semester, about how many students are active in the club?
So, on average, we have an active student turnout of about fifteen students, I would say. Every semester, the, so we initially had this issue in the past where students who had already participated in the club one semester would not return due to the lack of opportunity for growth. However, this semester is the first semester where we have actually a significant amount of reoccurring students from the prior semester as the way that I have structured the Engineering Club is, in order to work on the go-kart, you must be at least, you must have been in the club for one semester prior, meaning we're ensuring reoccurring members. So this semester, we're looking at about twenty in the beginning and that number is only expected to grow as you release news publications, as we actually go to specific classrooms and talk about the club and what we have to offer, as well as the Battery Challenge and other challenges that we offer to any student that's a participant.
Thanks.
Trustee Petchikoff?
Well, I'm going to kind of piggyback, because that was kind of where I was going as well. Because it kind of sounds like some of these things aren't getting completed necessarily, like this go-kart is going to take a while to get to the completion portion. So, how are you maintaining continuity in the educational experience as students drop out and come in with a different level of introduction to what you're doing currently?
Right, that's a great question. So, the system that we have in place, at least for introductory students, entry-level students, is the projects that Aiden had showcased are all based on a system known as Vex Robotics. Now, this system is very supportive. There's almost endless documentation online, as well as within physical, you know, documentation in M-Tech that we use to teach students the basic concepts and principles that are used in the go-kart. Then the following semester, when they hopefully return, they can apply those principles that they learned from the Vex Robots and use it on the go-kart. Now, in terms of the go-kart, in terms of for continuity, we have a timeline. So every semester, we try to tackle one main goal. The goal for this semester with the go-kart is to get it rolling. This is still a brand-new project. I just wrapped up the planning with my board and ran it by Dr. Nemeggi. But overall, we try to tackle one main goal every semester. If a student joins in the middle of the semester, one of us will sit through and walk them through what we've done so far, get an idea of where they are currently and what they can handle, and from there, we will tailor their experience to what they feel comfortable with. This is a very high-level project as many things can go wrong. So, we have a lot of fail safes. It is the duty of the board, we have eight board members, to constantly survey the go-kart, make sure that every student is doing what they should be doing, and ensuring that no one is going to ruin it for the rest of us.
Thank you.
Trustee Watts?
All right, so just really quickly, you, the slide went, I think you guys switched it too quickly. For the event in April, April twenty-fifth, what were the times again?
Twelve-thirty to two P M. Twelve-thirty to two P M, yeah, there it is.
Two. What, is that good?
That's so cool, oh my God.
Wait, wait, wait. That doesn't mean you're going to see her.
You'll hear me coming with my high heels. So I wanted to say you guys were really impressive because as you guys were talking about everything you're doing, you're bringing in so many different components, right? Like, it's through the engineering, but I think like leadership, presentation. I'm hearing collaboration, you're mentoring other students. You're creating a board, so like a strategic plan going forward. Are you aware that you're doing all of this or you're just doing it and it just happens to come to fruition?
So, it's actually really funny that you say that. This entry-level system with the go-kart, so we all met in the beginning of the semester saying, what do you guys want to do this semester? And one of the board members mentioned, man, I really want to build a go-kart. U of M Dearborn has a go-kart. All these colleges have these cool projects and we're stuck with these Vex Robotics, you know? I would like to tackle a bigger challenge. And so we're thinking to ourselves, what's the best way to do this? Oh, let's do this and this and this. But then we have, we realize, okay, who can work on the project? We only have the board at that time. We don't have any new members and all the prior members that weren't obligated to show up to that board meeting didn't show up. So we realized that we have to create a system, if this project is going to work, to benefit not just the board members that are there, but to be sustainable and viable. In order to create sustainability, you need structure. You need something where in the Constitution it says you must, you know, the Vice President must maintain the go-kart's mechanical functionality. The Chief Engineer, we ended up appointing a Chief Engineer just for the project whose sole purpose is to make sure that students don't damage the go-kart. That's his only job. And, essentially, and he's doing great. He's doing great. When students have questions, they turn to him, they turn to myself, they turn to Aiden, and they all, you know, it's overall been a really good system. But it's a system, as you said, that was created out of necessity to make sure that our projects stay proper. And I think that's what's great with this club is I did not know what I was getting into in the beginning of the semester, but I'm really glad I did because it's been such a fulfilling experience to take this prototype that you can actually see here, that I built in my garage in like two weeks, and see it, see students collaborating on it and collaborating on a fully welded steel frame. It's something that brings joy to myself, just knowing like, look at what we've done so far and I know that there's so much more opportunities out there, not just for this year, but for next year. It's mentioned here, we aim to make it self-driving, or at the very least, self-steering. So if we're going to hit a wall, it'll tell us, don't do that. But that's what this project has yielded and it's this board and all the structure that's surrounding it has come out of this necessity and I don't see that stopping in the near future.
Now, before you guys leave, obviously from the podium, when you do leave HFC, where do you see yourselves?
I think that's, you know, I can speak for myself at least. I recently applied to U of M Ann Arbor and I've been accepted, so hopefully be...
Congrats.
Thank you. So I will hopefully be going there to pursue architectural engineering as Henry Ford has an amazing architecture program. This is a little off the topic, but you guys have provided me the opportunity to explore two careers that I deeply, deeply love and the fact that there's a genuine degree out there that I can pursue that combines both is, you know, perfect. So, that's my hope.
Of course. I plan, well, shoot. I plan to go into aviation because my father is a pilot and he gets to travel the world and I think that is a very fulfilling job. And here at HFC, I really like the engineering program because though I am going to be a pilot, I do want to know how it works, obviously. Because like, you can drive a car, but if you know how it works, then you understand how to fix like altercations in the mechanisms, obviously. And when you're flying, you understand, oh, why is this doing it? Oh, I can logically deduce it's the carburetor or, oh, it's the wings or something like that. And I think this engineering, this entire engineering program has let me essentially express my creativity through mechanics because I think it's very interesting and I'm probably planning to go to Western because they got a very good aviation program. Nice.
I think our president can speak to that as well, so.
He didn't talk to you already, did he?
I said, okay.
For me, my first choice would be U of M Ann Arbor. There's no really particular reason why. I just like the school and the campus. But I'm going to be here for a while because I'm finishing my business degree and then I'm coming back to get an engineering degree and then chancering, so.
Miss Lynn, while you're there, could you go to your slide where we are partnering with the University of Michigan Dearborn next door on that challenge? I'm not sure everyone saw that second board, so can you share that second board with us?
Yeah, HFC is currently partnering with UMD next door and the team is, is it this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can talk about that.
Yeah, this is where Hassan...
My apologies. My apologies. I'm also the student coordinator for this challenge, so I can speak a little more in depth about that. So, yeah, Henry Ford College is partnering with the University of Michigan Dearborn and the team is one of ten winners across North America. Now, this competition has been highly sought after by over sixty universities across the nation and Dr. Nemeggi has submitted a proposal in conjunction with faculty at U of M Dearborn to participate in the challenge and we, along with ten other schools within the nation, now have won the lucky opportunity to do so. That's kind of just explaining what the slide is. But essentially, what this project does is it provides students an avenue to not only form amazing connections with faculty at U of M Dearborn as that is a very popular school to transfer to here from Henry Ford College, but also expose us to technologies that I could have never imagined I would even have the opportunity to see, let alone study. Solid-state batteries, which I'm not sure if any of you guys are involved in the EV space, but it is the future or the next step in electric vehicle technology and the fact that Stellantis and the Department of Energy are providing students with not only the cells, but a full-blown vehicle to put these cells into is something that, again, very grateful to have the opportunity to participate in. So if you guys have any specific questions, please.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes. Trustee Watts, as mentioned earlier about how you're using collaboration and all the other things that you need in an organization and they're really honing your skills. But one thing, and you just touched on it briefly there a little bit, but one piece that I was curious about is funding because you look like you have all these projects going. How are you able to fund what you're doing and do you do fundraisers? Do you just look to grants? Do you, how does that work?
Yeah, that's a wonderful question. So essentially, a majority of our funding so far has come from both the Engineering Department through Dr. Nemeggi, as well as the Student Activities Office, Cassandra Flucker, Kayla Collins, and all the wonderful faculty that have worked to support us so far. We understand that the go-kart, as well as our other projects, are likely not going to be cheap. And we have currently, or we are currently developing a sponsorship packet that we hope to actually send out to sponsors, to potential sponsors, potential equipment providers, as well as safety equipment providers, and in exchange for recognition. So, for example, on the go-kart, we'll have a back base plate where we can put the logo of the company or we can have team shirts with the logo displayed on the back. These are all documentations, documents that are still obviously in the works. We still need to run a couple of things by Student Activities as it does have the Henry Ford name on it, so we need to make sure it's A-OK to display. But I believe that answers the question. Essentially, so far, we've been fully funded in-house, which we are very grateful for. However, in the future, we are working to sustainably collect at least funding or at least equipment from sponsors, whether directly or indirectly.
When you get the sponsorship form put together, send it to the board, please.
We will, we will.
Trustee Mosip?
No, I just wanted to commend you for the work that you do. I understand this is volunteer work, but it definitely sparks out of the interest that you have in engineering and I hope more students will join because they will apply whatever they learn in the classroom and find joy doing that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Another round of applause, please.
Thank you, everyone.
You know, I just want to thank these young people again, but just to say, what makes Henry Ford College unique is that these students are not unique for us. We have the largest engineering program of all twenty-eight community colleges in the state and the best record of getting them to where they want to be, the dreams that they have, whether that's on the other side of our parking lot, whether it's on the other side of our state, whether it's any place that they can imagine here because of the engineering that they do. And I do want to again recognize Hassan Nemeggi and Ashiq Walkani. You all take classes with Ms. Kani as well. And the fact of the matter is, we teach them out at the M-Tech because we literally are out of space to be able to handle such a large and very, very talented group of folks who are engineering our smart. So, they also know that, you know, Uncle Michael does have an ATM machine. John does know about it. It was not long ago when I had to say something out loud about this go-kart and the first thing I got was, the students aren't driving it. At one point, I gladly said, no, it drives itself. And that opens a completely different heaven.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, next item, please.
President's items?
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I will be brief. I want to introduce you to someone who's been with us for several years but has assumed a new role and some big shoes. Last time we were here, I extolled virtues on our retiring colleague Fred Steiner and after that, I sent to you all, trustees, the plan to replace those big shoes, at least in the interim basis and possibly for permanent. But certainly now, I want to introduce you to Daniel Murray, who was Fred Steiner's number two and now is the interim director of purchasing. Go ahead and stand up, Daniel. He's going to be trying to do as well as Fred did for all those years. He already has met with a committee of this board as recently as this evening. I've gotten to know him really well and I'm excited to see him in his new role. I know he carries the confidence of John Satkowski and me and I hope he will with all of you. So, please welcome Daniel to his new role.
We're going to remember your face.
Birthdays are always a big deal for me. I don't know if I commented on this. I can't really remember, but John Satkowski had somewhat of a memorable birthday at the end of last month. And what'd you say, seven, what was the... Seven perfect tens? Seven perfect tens. So happy birthday, John. And then there's a member of this board that at the beginning of next month will be celebrating a birthday and we'll let you figure that out, trustees, on your own. But it's between now and the next board meeting. Last thing I'll say is it's been, hey, Vice President Asher, President Barry. President Barry, President Barry and Vice President Asher, I just want to compliment you all. If you're going to go into engineering, it's a tough, tough role, but what's really difficult is communicating what you know to people who are not engineers and all three of you did very, very well on that today. I just want you to know that is, and what old people like me often see and complain about, which is probably not fair, but we do complain about it, is that folks that are younger than us are not very good at communicating and you three are excellent at it, excellent at it. I would like to record what we did, what you do and I'd like to show it to all the folks in your generation because the way you speak is very effective, no matter what field you go into. So just please know that that was very impressive to all of us. Aiden, if you're going to go to Western and you want to learn how to fly, let me know.
Oh, you got it.
All right. All right, all right. Thank you, guys. Go ahead, you can leave.
Yes. Thank you very much for having us.
Yes. Folks, most of my time has been spent on doing advocacy when I'm not on the clock, and doing information when I am on the clock for the millage. I want to thank a couple members of my team that have helped me do that. Last week, or maybe it was just this week, when were we at the P twelve? Was it this week? No.
Last week.
Last week, it's only Monday. Last week, I was with the P twelve at a town hall, trustee Barry attended, I appreciate you doing that, we were, I was advocating at that. Last month, I was with the Dearborn Federation of Neighborhood Associations, trust, Vice, Vice Chair Pelichkov invited me there, I appreciate that very much. Hope you know Sam Bazey, who's in the back of the room there, he's carted me around to every single mosque that'll let me sit there and talk. I think, was it six? We did Friday prayer at one of them. It just, I appreciate you very much, Sam. Eric Rader is the president of our local A F T, and he spoke on our behalf in front of the city council in Dearborn. That's just a sampling of what, what's going on here. I appreciate everyone's effort, and I hope you know that we're within one week of the election, and I encourage everyone to vote. I'm not gonna encourage you how to vote at this juncture, but I will tell you that, trustees, we are, we are doing our, our level best to educate the voter electorate here with information, and if you have any suggestions for me, please know that, like your colleagues, Chair Barry and Vice Chair Pelichkov and others, if you show me where to go, I'll show up and, and I'll do information or advocacy, and that's my report, Madam Secretary.
Great, thank you very much. Next item, please.
Action items, citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who have submitted a blue card by seven ten P M. to the secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items, therefore speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to the comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or college employees. Please limit comments to three minutes. If during those three minutes, the comments become personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant, your public comment time may be interrupted or ended. We do not have any blue cards.
Okay, thank you.
Next, are there any action items on this agenda which the board members, the president wished to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude them from the action items below. Recommended action, move to approve action items numbered one through four is recommended in this agenda.
So moved, support.
Motion is moved by trustee Pechikov, supported by trustee McDonald. Are there any questions? Are there any objections to the motion? Hearing none, please attach a unanimous vote in affirmative. Next item, please.
Board of Trustees' Business, acknowledgements of correspondence.
Next item, please.
Board Committee Reports.
I believe, policy met earlier today? Trustee Moser?
The Policy Committee met today, and there were various discussions. We first had a discussion on the purchasing policy, and then we also talked about updates to the academic integrity, and we had Dr. Howell present to us as well. There was also a discussion on the reporting of incidents, of accidents, and that policy is also getting modified for next meeting. And then we also discussed the sale of commercial advertising on campus, and that might be rescinded for next meeting as well. There were two other policies that we didn't get to, but we will get to them next meeting. Any, anything else from the trustee board?
I don't have any questions. I think it's only the call we had. Next item, please.
Request for information and our future agenda items.
Next item?
Board Member Commentary.
Trustee Pechikov?
I just wanted to add to what President Cavalluna spoke about. I was with Dr. Rader in front of city council when we spoke, and we elicited a very enthusiastic response from the mayor suddenly when we discussed student success at the college, and he became very animated about remembering his own experiences here as a dual-enrolled student and the benefits that he saw, and, and was, I believe, spurred to speak at that moment when we perhaps hadn't thought we would get any kind of commitment from him. So it's good to know that when you go out and connect with people in the community about what we do here and why it is so important and what it represents to the community, you really can get people to accept paying a little extra tax for the benefit that they are going to see.
The same, the same. Not a little extra, the same.
The same, well, all right. I don't mean it in that way, it's not.
Good catch.
More, yes.
I would almost never interrupt you, Madam Trustee.
Even our meeting tonight, though, the gentleman recognized himself as a former one there.
Oh, yeah.
Anybody else?
Just, just again, we're talking about the vote. Reminder to everyone, next Tuesday, but also, a lot of people just aren't aware of it, because we don't usually have a vote in February, we don't usually have a vote this time of year, and so please, remind everybody, remind your friends and family, get the word out, whatever you can do, because the people, a lot of people just aren't aware, and they're not thinking about it, and they might think about it this week, but they might not think about it next Tuesday, so keep that pressure on. Thank you.
And early voting is happening right now as we speak, and polls are still open until eight P M. tonight.
I was just gonna.
I'm sorry?
President Barry said.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Voting right now, or any day from now till next week.
Yeah.
I'll just add to that, too. Right now, a lot of people are not comfortable with voting for Democrats or Republicans or a president in general, or whatever the case may be. If you know anybody like that, just tell them to pick up a, a nonpartisan ballot, because you can do that, too, and that makes a statement for sure, if they don't vote for any president, but they vote for these ballot items, so I think that's important as well.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Future meeting dates, Monday, March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, P twelve Board of Trustees' Meeting, seven P M. at Administrative Services Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom. Monday, March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, H O C Board of Trustees' Policy Committee Meeting, six P M. at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Cabinet Conference Room. Monday, March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, H O C Board of Trustees' Meeting, seven P M. at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rose Nile Boardroom.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Good night, everybody.